And joining us tonight, as they do every board meeting throughout the summer, and we're so grateful for that, are our NJROTC cadets for the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
Colors, up. Present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut, pose. Arms. Colors, up. Present, arms. Close the colors. Ready, two. Carry, colors. Ready, cut, up, out, face. Forward, march.
Please be seated, ladies and gentlemen. As you can tell, a little bit different colored arms today. Let me present my oldest cadet. Major Mike Carruthers from Copperland, Everly, New York. Major Carruthers, later in his Army, retired Army. He came to Garfield to watch a drill meet, what, 10 years ago? Almost 10 years ago. Had been a staunch supporter of Garfield, JRC. He likes me for I don't know why, but I'm just saying. Cadet Everly and Cadet Harris. Quickly, what we did Saturday against six cadets and Major Carruthers and Miss Larios and another cadet, Ma. We were over at the Akron Children's Hospital and these young cadets set up for the cerebral children's hospital cerebral palsy festival, as we did last year. And well received, of course, and that is a heart wrenching, amazing event to see these children come in. Major Carruthers, of course, helps me out when I can't beat her or even when I am here in not uniform like myself, but they did real well. And Major Carruthers helps me out whenever he can and whenever I need him, he just loves program. Thank you very much. Right, as you were left, face. Pull up, up. Thank you. Forward, march.
All right, Community and School Reflections. Mr. Walker.
Yes, and a couple of ones was happy to be able to attend along with several other board members Project Learn's graduation ceremony, recognition and GED graduation ceremony. Very touching, very, the children, or young adults, I'm sorry, and adults were asked to be loud and proud having to graduate it and receive their GED. And then we were fortunate to share with them afterwards, thankful for the LeBron James Family Foundation, where they had a repass for them and gave them mentors, not just for a couple of months, for a whole year. Chase Bank would mentor about, I think it's eight of the LeBron James Family Foundation parents to help them not only expand hopefully their GED to maybe a associate's degree, bachelor's degree, or to go into some trade so that they can continue to encourage their young people. So that was very exciting and very rewarding for everyone that was there. And then I was able to go to Crane's Women of Note Award and one of the recipients is a former Buckto High School graduate who works for G. Stevens, Hallie Jones Caper. And she's the, I think, Senior Vice President of Glen Stevens Operations. She's the operations and manager of transportation for G. Stevens Incorporated. So we were grateful to be able to see that and honoring women and women achievers and to see the outstanding work that they do. We also had the opportunity to share at the Third Annual Hope for Cancer Cure Walk, which is sponsored by the New Hope Baptist Church and their cancer support group. And to share in that, they usually walk about five miles or jog, walk, run. So that was nice to be in that situation. And again, to encourage, they have a support group, I think that meets on Wednesdays, to encourage, just to talk for those persons who have experiencing, you know, cancer or are survivors or are remembering loved ones who have died from cancer. And then I was able to attend the wake of Gwen Dang, who is the mother of four, maybe five, but definitely four of our Akron Public Schools employees, to our administrators, to our teachers in our public school system family, where she raised 13 children. And when I talk to her son, Aldous, today, they have an orphanage in Vietnam, they have a school in Vietnam, they have ministries there that touch lives. And we know that they touch our life by investing in education by way of their children, and their children have touched our children by using their gifts and skills to bless our children. I know at Portage Path, I know at a couple of other schools and working with our English as Second Language students over at Finley and Jennings and North Community and throughout our district. So just wanted to highlight that because one family, the impact of one family has on the Akron Public Schools. And so we thank them for their impact.
Ms. Walker.
Actually, one of the really interesting things they attended on Thursday, the 13th, was the STEAM Academy Leading Reception over at Firestone, which was, it's the prelude to the Urban Leaders Gala on August 18th, but they were honoring four women for their efforts in STEAM. One, Diane Miller Dawson from the city of Akron, the finance chairman from UA, Dr. Julie Dow, from Goodyear, Cara Adams, who is a chief engineer of race tire development. So, I mean, it's an excellent role model for our women. And then the fourth was Dr. Yolita Lodi from SUMA. And they were just all very inspiring, very interesting women, and they were able to tell their stories a little bit. They will all be honored at that gala, but this was just an event to honor them and a reception for them before that. So very exciting and very, obviously, very strong proponents of STEAM education. So they were very positive. And on Saturday, the 15th, the week before, our Navy Junior ROTC were at the Wounded Warriors softball game. And they presented colors before both of the games and they just, they did Akron proud. They did a great job and I was really glad that the kids got to stay through and watch the game if they wanted, but they were all there and did us proud at that one. And I know we're going to talk about it later, so I'll just briefly mention, but on last Monday, I was at the community dialogue meeting with Project Ujima and Crystal. She did a wonderful job and got everybody together and we can talk about that later, but it really was working on getting that community together. And the students were fabulous, so thank you for what you did on that. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, I attended the Ella College and Career Academy Design Team Meetings and very impressed, very impressed with the job they did. And they're coming up with just some great ideas and I just want to point out a simple one now, but it was, it was very impressive. There were students, there were teachers, there were parents, and there was community. There were at least four deans from Akron U, two people from admissions, and I think a couple others beyond that. But it was very strong presence from Akron U and a very strong presence from Metro Parks. So we had a, just, I think, a very good group and I think they came up with some very good ideas and I'm looking forward to seeing what the rest of it is. And then I also attended the Project Learn. And on Saturday, I attended the OSBA Board of Trustees Meeting down in Columbus. And one thing, just to point out to us, because we have valued his input, but Damon Asbury is going to be retiring and he'll be, they've kind of talked him into staying through October and getting some living room budget, but he is ready to retire. So we're going to, we're going to miss Damon a lot. And then Kim Miller Smith, who is the central region person, but she's working on a project of expanding programs and creating a dialogue on student achievement services. So what's the board member's role in student achievement, understanding the district report card, graduation requirements 2018, community engagement and student achievement. And she also has a long-term goal of creating an online professional development for board members. So there's some interesting things coming down the line. But you can tell that when we get into this, the board members know the least about student achievement. They understand the finances, they understand, and they were all talking and they admit, they go, well, we try not to micromanage, but I guess you're right, we don't really know that much about student achievement. So in terms of that, I thought we do a pretty good job because we do talk about it at all of our meetings, but in talking to representatives from around the districts, they don't think it comes up in board meetings maybe as much as it should. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the National School Board Association Council and Caucus Retreat, and the focus there was on equity and leadership. They were, we discussed a lot of different, a lot of different dialogue, there was workshops, there was a lot going on that dealt with equity. The executive director, Mr. Genzel, was there. He talked and he wanted to hear about what districts were talking, what they're doing in their districts as far as equity. They're trying to get the states involved more with equity because they're finding out that there's a lot of rural schools now that because of the economics and poverty in those schools, they are also needing to have equity policies and more equity. They, we dealt with the Equity Department because they started last year, the Equity Department, and then we did more work, so there was a lot of workshops in dealing with this. They also brought a superintendent in, a Dr. Philip Hickman from Columbia Municipal School District in Columbus, Mississippi, who spoke about equity, has a number of books that he's written on equity and other work, but he was there to talk to the group in reference to equity. I did share Akron Public Schools equity policy. It was like giving candy to kids when they saw, they really liked what they saw and everyone asked for a copy because they were saying they want to know what is everyone doing as far as equity and whether the state's going to be doing shortly with equity. So we are ahead of the game. I'm very glad of that because it's a major issue that's coming down, or a major policy that's going to be coming down through all the schools throughout the nation. And so it was, I was glad to be there. I learned even a little bit more about equity that I thought I knew that I didn't know. So it was very good. So I'm glad that we are front and center on, and having our policy already set and along with the College and Career Academies, I think we are going to be doing a lot of things very well and a lot of school districts will be trying to look at Akron Public Schools to see what we're doing. So I'm glad that we're working forward, working towards and moving forward in the direction that we're going in to help our kids. And I didn't share the College and Career Academies yet, so that'll come up later so they know what we're doing. That's a big one, so they'll hear that later. So it was good and I just wanted to share that little bit of what was going on there as far as the National School Board Association is concerned in school districts across the country. And there were also, I'm sorry, there was the Native American Caucus who was there, there was the National Hispanic Caucus that was there, it was the Black Caucus that was there, and there was Cube who was there at the table. So they're talking equity together and trying to build more of a nationwide, what do I call it, nationwide movement for equity in all schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I went to the Project Learn graduation as well, and one thing I did want to add, because this person's name was brought up not only at the Project Learn ceremony, but also at the I Promise Two graduation party that was afterwards, but Leslie Smith, who was with Project Learn, they, in Project Grad, they call her Miss Leslie, but she was actually, there was a shout out to her onstage at the Project Learn graduation ceremony, how she, at least a one graduate, kept her thumb on this graduate to make sure she got to school, did her studies and got her GED. And then Miss Leslie was also at the I Promise Two graduation ceremony and they actually gave her an award and sort of gave her a new nickname as Professor Leslie, I guess. And so just a little, little kudos to her in how she's made an impression on the students, not only from the I Promise Two students, but also just Project Learn as a whole. Thought it was interesting, I believe it was, the number was 146 graduates this time around for Project Learn for their, for their GED. So that was pretty neat. Had the opportunity to go to the Akron Roundtable, very interesting speaker, her name was Deborah Went Smith. She's an Akron native and her resume is quite impressive of all the presidents that she's worked for on competitiveness and workforce development and things of that nature. There was so much information, I stopped writing things down because I was missing things as she was talking, I was writing things down, but you know, just looking into the future, and it's a lot of what she does with her position, but just a couple interesting points. She was talking about the website or the service called 23andMe and it's, you can get DNA information about yourself and just interesting how that company is using that information just to study humans right now and all the information they're finding. She talked a lot about data gathering and information and one of the most interesting points, she asked everybody, she said, nobody in this room will be able to answer this question, what US company gathers more data than any company in the US? And it's Snap-on Tools. I thought that was so interesting, but I actually did a little research, went online, looked at Snap-on Tools and they have a huge line of tools that actually communicate information back to Snap-on so they can continue to improve their product. I thought, that one sort of blew me away. She talked about a new technology in DNA, I can't remember, I didn't get it written down, but how it's, they've discovered something just recently, how it's so much easier to manipulate DNA or change DNA and they're using that for hunger standpoint and many other things, but she pointed out how it could help, you know, alleviate hunger more than what we're doing on this planet. She touched briefly on K-12. She was more critical about K-12 education, but I thought it was interesting, her take on it, how she thinks K-12 education needs disrupted. And it's sort of like the old joke you hear, if you send somebody back in time, they hop up in the 50s, 60s and 70s and 80s, everything's changed but education. But I thought it was interesting because I thought of Akron Public Schools when she was talking about disrupting education. And I look at it in a positive manner, I think we are being disruptive, I guess, with the College and Career Academies, but it is a different way to reach out to students and, you know, hopefully get them ready for career and graduate. So I think we're playing a part in maybe that. A lot of people think disruption is charter school. She didn't mention that at all, but I don't know if she was going that way or not, but she didn't. But very interesting speaker at the Roundtable. Lastly, I participated in OSBA Budget Seminar that they had online last week. Lot of good information and they do save those recordings and the questions, so if you're interested in hearing from our lobbyists in Columbus on what they're taking, you know, their take and their interpretation of what happened to the budget, I do recommend, you know, anybody, not just board members, listen to it. But just a couple of the highlights and what they talked about. One of the things they talked about was transportation, probably taking the biggest hit of anything else in that budget. And they said over $100 million of total reduction statewide in transportation. They talked about a sliding minimum going down, not quite sure what that is, I haven't asked Deborah yet, but it didn't sound like a good thing. Talked a little bit about early childhood funding and I thought it was interesting, they changed in the budget that if there's a fourth grade slot not taken by a fourth grader now, you could put a third grader in, where I guess you couldn't do that in the past, I didn't know that, but I thought that was a good thing to hear. They talked a lot about, a lot about College Credit Plus and did some good things as far as making it a little harder for kids to get in, they need to be ready, they're tightening up the eligibility. It was unfortunate, they talked about textbooks and the bill didn't include any language on any relief for textbooks for us, and I know it's a big problem, not for just us, but everybody, but very interesting seminar.
Just one thing, and I know it's probably everybody's first thing that they would think that I read every day, is the New England Medical, you know, Journal of Medicine and the, and Forbes, articles in Forbes, but instead of Sports Illustrated. But the, I do do a lot of reading in that, there's a lot of good articles, a lot of, you can glean a lot of good information from that, but you brought up that issue on the DNA with like seeds and corn and that it would help feed and it's a lot of monkey business with a lot of these big companies interfering with the progression that are hurting, you know, worldwide, being able to feed the people that really need fed the most in third world nations and even in the United States and other places. And it's too bad, you know, you don't know which side's telling the truth or that, yeah, I guess you just got to determine that for yourself, but you get a chance to read, an article comes up like that, it's very interesting to read how the big companies interfere sometimes with progression and buy up the patents and, you know, that could really be feeding a lot of, a lot of folks around the world.
Just wanted to ask Bruce, Mr. Alexander, has anything been done with finding a new executive director for Cube?
They're working on that right now, they have an interim, she's an attorney, she was on the Prince George County School Board and she was also president, past president of Cube as well. So she's doing some work right now, but they have not filled, actually filled the position, but I think they're going to be leaning towards her.
All right, before we move on, I'm going to, I'll jump in on Community and School Reflections and just throw my president's report in here as well. But first, I do want to acknowledge and send our thoughts and prayers to the families of students that we've recently lost since our last boarding, board meeting, to the family of Brandon Kits, Portage Path student who unfortunately drowned in Springfield Lake, and to the family and friends of Rashay Johnson, an East CLC student, and to Breonna Hayes, a Buckto CLC student, both of whom lost their lives tragically in a car accident on Exchange Street. We want to send our thoughts and our prayers that, for their families, that they find some comfort in what is certainly a difficult time. With that, I want to acknowledge our board members and our staff. I mean, as we sit around the table and I'm listening to everything that everybody's been to, I mean, we're already gearing up for the next school year, but clearly it's been a busy summer. We've all been really busy and whether it's summer graduations or events or conferences or meetings or whatever, our staff and our board and even our faculty has been extremely busy over the summer, so I just want to say a quick thanks for all of your hard work. I know we've even loved you and you thought it was going to be a light summer, but thanks for putting up with us and for doing the work of the district. We know that you've been really busy and clearly our board has too, so I just want to acknowledge that. Myself, I went to a few things between our last board meeting, but Tim Miller and I both participated with Principal Larry Johnson at Firestone CLC. We had the opportunity to have the Torchbearers out, which is an emerging leaders program here in Akron, it's an affiliate, an independent affiliate of Leadership Akron. So we had, typically those general membership meetings draw between 50 and 75 emerging leaders to each meeting, and this meeting, we were able to host them at Firestone. And we've all said multiple times that sometimes for those folks that haven't been inside a CLC, to see what Akron Public Schools is all about, sometimes you just got to get them in the building. Talk about their programming, talk about the challenges that we face, talk about what's on the horizon and what we're doing next. And, you know, I'll let Tim speak up if he has anything to add, but I got a lot of great feedback from Torchbearers. And we actually got some really good questions about graduation, changes in graduation requirements and transportation and, so we had a lot of good questions. But again, I think just breaking down those barriers in the community, getting people in our buildings, letting them see that there are bright, shiny places of learning and that there's a lot that takes place in there. I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to point out?
I'll just, just that, you know, after that meeting, I saw a lot of positive things on social media about the Akron Public Schools, so generated some really good, organic, positive things online.
I also had the opportunity to visit wards 10, 3, 5 and 8, just to talk a little bit about Akron Public Schools, a little bit about my daytime job as well and things that we're doing, so encourage you, if you haven't been able to get out, to maybe visit some of those. Obviously, we saw a lot of media interest in the last couple of weeks over our decision to adopt the policy regarding Narcan. I want to say thank you to our board. I think we all represented Akron Public Schools extremely well. I think there, it generated a lot of good dialogue and discussion that also probably needed to take place and I appreciate the feedback on both sides of that decision. But again, I think we represented Akron Public Schools very well in that, so. Wanted to make a brief mention, and I've asked the superintendent this because I don't, I want to make sure that if we hear rumors out in the community- I want to make sure that if we hear rumors out in the community, that they are, you know, that they are dispelled. But as we know it, Harris Jackson is still, if you hear anybody questioning whether or not it's still on target, it is. We are likely to still have a punch list of items that still need to be taken care of after the opening, but we are still on target to open. I had some questions from the community come in over the last couple of weeks on that. All right. Anything else or any questions for community and school reflections?
If not, approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on July 10, 2017?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 47 personnel recommendations, and I'd like to call your attention to item number three, where we are rescinding the suspension of teaching contracts for several teachers. And this afternoon, you'll see that we added two additional names to that list. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the personnel recommendations? Will you have something after?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from items 43 and 44.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining from item 45.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 46.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from item number 47, please.
Anything? Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you a couple of new administrative roles. Sabina Mitchell, if you could please stand up. This is Rachel Taka. Rachel is a graduate of Hoben High School and attended her bachelor's degree from Georgetown State University, and then a master's degree also from North State, Georgetown State. And then we see the principal's license in 2005. She began her student teaching at Boardman Center Middle School and Boardman, and then began her teaching career at Akron Public Schools as a special ed teacher at Barrett Elementary in 1996. She continued to teach special education at Barrett and then at Jennings for the next seven years. In 2004, she was appointed as a supplemental services teacher for the special education department. In 2007, she was appointed as a middle school assistant principal at Goodyear, and the following year, in 2008, was appointed as principal at Bridges. She was then recommended for high school principal position in June of 2013, and she's been the principal at North High School ever since. While at North High School, though, Rachel has been intimately involved in the creation and the launching of our college and career academies. She's been to Nashville, I don't know how many times, and we've run college to Nashville working on this project, and has just done a phenomenal job. And tonight, with the creation of our new director of college and career academies position, we'd like to recommend Rachel for that position. Congratulations.
I feel quite old enough to be working that long. I guess I am. I want to thank the board and Superintendent James and Assistant Superintendent McWilliams-Woods for this wonderful opportunity, as well as your continued support for the last year with the college and career academies. When you really think about what the academies are going to do for our kids and for our community, the fact that we have such huge momentum and energy in our community and our board and our staff here at Akron Public Schools, I am beyond honored to lead the work for academies in our district and for our kids. I want to also recognize the fact that you've all provided me the foundation of fantastic leaders on this team as we move this work. And Yvonne Culver is here, she's our coordinator, will be in our department of college and career academies, and I'm really excited to do the work. So thank you very much.
Can I just say, it's Ms. Taka.
Yeah, just kidding. We have spent probably more time with Ms. Taka than any other administrator in this district over the last couple of years, so we're just thrilled for the work that you've done. And also, as alumni of North High School, Bruce and I can't thank you enough for the work you've done there. And it is, I know you're going to introduce Ms. Sabeta, but, you know, knowing that it'll be in her capable hands for now is an excitement for us as well. But thank you for the work you did there and forward to what you're going to do. Okay. Can you just get up next?
This is off the board just a little bit, but the, and I met some gentlemen who was working over at North Hill on Burling, Bhutan? Is that one of the places, the refugee, do we have a significant coming from, significant number coming from Bhutan?
Yes.
I thought, okay.
Yes. So all are in the Poli kids. That's their...
Okay, that's included in the Poli. Yeah, that, okay. He was trying to explain to me, and I had never heard of Bhutan before, and he spelled it out for me, and said, big mountains, glass snow, you know, India, China. He says, if there's ever a war, he says, we don't fight wars. He says, we just go about our own business. So he seemed like a nice gentleman.
Kim Sabeta is an alumni of North High School, who obtained her bachelor's degree from the University of Akron and her master's degree from Kent State, and received her principal's license in May 2008. She did her special, her student teaching and special education at Harris Elementary and Ellam High School, and began her teaching career with Akron as a special ed teacher at Kenmore High School in August of 97. She spent four years on assignment to the special ed department, and in 2009, she was appointed as a special education coordinator. In 2013, she became the high school assistant principal at North High School and has continued to work in that role ever since. With Ms. Taka's appointment to the director of college and career academies position, this time, we're recommending that Kim be named interim high school position, principal at North High School. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the board, as well as Superintendent James and Dr. McWilliams-Woods and Mr. Black for this opportunity. As was mentioned, that I am an alumni of North, of North High School, so very near and dear to my heart. I know a couple other board members as well, North High graduates, so go Vikings.
Go Vikings.
So it's just very special to be there at North and to lead the building and our college and career academy work. So I know we, just, it's great to be near and dear to my heart, but more so, our kids deserve this. And, you know, I'm just excited to lead that work in the building. So thank you again.
I just want to say too, that I've worked with both Ms. Taka and Ms. Sabeta, and it's been a great team. I've spent more time probably at North in the last two years than I've, since I graduated a couple of years ago. But it's been, I've just seen the work that they do, and I enjoy seeing what they, the relationship they have with the kids there. I mean, that's a tougher school when you have all these different nationalities and different languages. But I just watch them, and it's just fun, and I've kind of enjoyed going back to North now. Before, I didn't really go too often, but I really enjoyed coming to the schools since both of you have been there, so thank you.
Thank you, and we welcome you anytime.
Thank you.
Mr. Otterman?
I would just like to just ask, congratulate you on your position, both of you. And I said this before, I think maybe when you walked me through when I visited, did a visit, and you were very, very gracious, and I'm very, very thankful for it. The, one of the concerns, not only myself, but some other people, is the, and you've got a heck of a football coach and a heck of a staff. They're great, nothing but great guys, but I notice over the last five, 10 years, you know, there's been a diminished interest due to the enrollment. And a lot of the kids we're getting in aren't necessarily football players, they're more soccer, this or that. And just keep an eye on that situation, because it can be a dangerous situation when you get below a certain threshold. If you can't scrimmage 11-on-11 on a nightly basis, then, you know, you're putting kids out there that are at risk, you're putting kids out there that, they're out there because their moms and dads want them to be out there. They don't want to be out there. As a matter of fact, I was at a game at Ellet, and I was standing behind the bench, and one kid goes, there was only like 15 kids, and there was only four left, and he goes, man, I hope nobody else gets hurt, because I sure as heck don't want to go in. And another kid goes, near do I, you know? And it was funny, but it's not funny, because it's, you know, that's where, if you're not prepared in that game, and you got some, you know, a powerhouse running back or a receiver or something, run you right over, break your leg, neck, back, whatever, just try to keep an eye on that and keep us abreast on the, well, obviously, a lot of the games, but the numbers. But it's nothing to do, no reflection on your coaching staff at all. These guys are trying to recruit kids. They're doing a great job. I've talked to them on a number of occasions, but it's just, I don't know what the solution is. It's just we need to get, keep an eye on the numbers.
Thank you. All right. With the superintendent's report.
It's, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and three resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, but I almost skipped over. Any questions or comments on consent? Hearing none, roll call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from the retention of legal services resolution.
Ms. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 36 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any questions or comments? Just if you can bring to our attention item number two, the Oswell Company. I think we talked about that maybe in finance, but what exactly will they be doing?
Sure. The Oswell Company is our advisor for health insurance. They had come in and picked up a contract in the midst of negotiations, the start of HVAC, and planned a previous vendor's contract. And so they had expressed that, you know, they had to match that fee, but were interested in the longer-term commitment, but also that they were selling their services short a little bit. At the same time, we worked with Oswell, our current provider, Affordable Care Act Services, which I think is about $25,000 contract. We're going to be reducing that to offset some of this additional increase.
Good question. Any other questions or comments?
Reverend Walker, were you asking about the law firms?
The what?
The law firms?
Oh, no, no, I was about item two, which dealt with the insurance.
I already know, okay.
We talked about wellness benefits. Any other questions on business affairs? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Now, superintendent's report.
Yes, as Ms. Walsh spoke earlier regarding our meeting, regarding the Kenmore-Garfield discussion circles, I have Crystal Jones here from Project Ujima, and I'd just like her to give a brief summary of our last meeting. And I understand there's a subsequent meeting scheduled for July 31st. Also, just to let the board know that I did make a visit to Kenmore. There were some concerns about different murals that were supposedly going to be covered over. Some of them are going to be covered over with plywood, so they're preserved, because certain kids from, like, whether it was a class of 1971 who signed murals, there are a few that in the corridors will cover. The majority of them will be left as they offer. Crystal, if you would, just give a brief summary of where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent James. First, I'd like to just thank the board and Superintendent James and Carla Sidley for all the support and for providing us with this opportunity to really hear from the students. You know, we've heard a lot from the adults about the merger. Years and years and years ago, I was a high school teacher at East, years and years ago. I mean, I'm shorthand, that was until you... And then more recently, I was with Project Grad as the college access coordinator. And one of the things I've always liked is being able to hear directly from the students. They think and feel deeply about things, and they think and feel deeply about the merger. So the circles provide an opportunity for them to actually just say what was on their mind, to voice their concerns, to voice their hopes and dreams for the merger. And initially, they didn't think we really cared about what they wanted to say, so many of them were hesitant to talk. But as it went on, they really, really became engaged in the circles and gave their best thinking to what can be done and what should be done to make the merger successful. And it's a wonderful, beautiful group of kids, and they're ready to go. You know, they, the school will be opening in, what, less than six weeks or so? And so they want to walk into an environment where they feel safe, where they feel that they're welcomed, and they don't want to feel and know about all the, you know, the strife and the contention that has been going on. So they were awesome. They were wonderful. Some of them volunteered, in fact, to present at the community circle, the first one we had Superintendent Jones mention last Monday. It was well-attended. We had about 35 people in circles, so it was a huge circle, but it was a structured process. What we really didn't want was to rehash all the decisions that have already been made. We wanted to really have a forward-thinking, positive conversation about what can be done to collectively and individually support the students as they transition into the merged high schools. So it was a great conversation. We started the circle out by doing what I call relationship moving kinds of things, because, you know, understandably, some people are still upset about it. You know, if I were losing my high school, I would be too. But the bottom line is that we're going forward, and what we want people to do is to begin to be, to develop relationships of trust and cooperation with each other. And so we started the circle out by, you know, telling our name and reason for, I mean, how we got our name, which is always a funny round. And then we asked the group to share a favorite memory from their school days. And that was just a great time for people to realize that we really have more things that connect us rather than divide us. And we all had these wonderful memories, and so that got people laughing. And then the round, the question that was really on the, in the circle, was basically, what can you do individually and what can we do collectively to make sure that the transition to the merged high schools is successful? And as I mentioned, we had three students who reported out on what their circles were, why they liked the circles, what they got from the circles, what their biggest pro is, in other words, what were they most excited about with the merger? And they are excited about it, and then what their biggest concern is. And the biggest pro was primarily, they're looking forward to maybe more programs, better teams, meeting new people, all of those things. And then a big concern, of course, is the fighting. Their concern, and I don't know if it's because they've heard a lot about it, or they only, they have their own concerns about it, but we talked about what their role should be as well. And so we look forward to continuing that conversation with them. And as Superintendent James mentioned, we will have a second circle this Monday coming up, July 31st, where we will continue the conversation of, we're going around the circle, passing the talking piece, so each person can provide their idea on what can be done. Their number one idea, of course, is supporting the students, and not only what somebody else can do, but what can you do personally to help, to help make that happen. And in the third phase, then, of course, will be us to hopefully hold some circles and train the students to facilitate their own conversations. Because as we can imagine, there may be issues that come up during the school year, but if the students are equipped to facilitate discussions themselves, then that will be very helpful, and they will feel empowered, hopefully, to address the issues that come up in their school environment.
Any questions for Crystal?
Sir, I would say neither.
Well, once they merge the kids into both groups, will you guys continue to have some circles periodically? Or would that be something, because I think it will still continue to make, help them bond, and then they'll bring more in, because those circles do get, become powerful.
Right.
So I think continuing that, even after removing, merge both, both schools, continuing that so they can get to know each other, and I think that'll...
And Mr. Alexander, you and I went through the P circle process, and so we were trained as facilitators there, and really understand the power of using the circles to build relationships of trust. You know, if I know you, and you know me, and you hear my story, and I hear your story, then again, we're connected. We find ways that we, that we can connect rather than ways that we can differ. So phase three of the project is actually doing just that. Hopefully, one, training students to become facilitators, hopefully training the staff and community and parents and whoever else wants to be able to, to learn how to facilitate the circles, and then have ongoing discussions when issues come up.
Great. But can you, Mrs. Mansfield?
Can you clarify? You said the students are concerned about the fighting. Are you talking about the disagreements between the merger coming together, or are you, are they concerned about physical altercations?
Well, they did express some concern about, you know, all the discord that they heard in the community and in the school about the mergers. But their concern is primarily about, they're concerned that there will be more fights. You know, there would be fights from the different factions, from the two different communities. They're concerned, because they mentioned, you know, stuff goes on on Snapchat, and it comes to school. Some of them talked about concerns about bullying and those kinds of things. And again, you know, we talked about what role they would play. And one of the things that the students are concerned about, which is a valid concern, is that they talked about, or they questioned, even though they got the circle and they had a good time and they got to know the students from the other schools, they questioned whether they, you know, this small group of students, relatively small group of students, would have enough influence over their fellow classmates to really change the culture or drive the culture in a positive way. Again, that's another reason for ongoing circles. And so to answer your question, it was mainly their concern about fights against students.
Mr. Otterman?
Mr. James, is there any plans to, I mean, based on what we've heard here, and, you know, and this is something that I had thought from, you know, get-go, that there would be, when you combine those two, is there plans to be more security?
Right.
Just until we see what's going to happen? Maybe we're, maybe we're pleasantly surprised, and it's not going to happen.
Yeah, so at the beginning, when we decided to do a merger, we're keeping both police officers from both Garfield and Kenmore at the combined site, along with the, we're combining security team members as well. So there will be more security team members and police than we would have at a typical high school as we start the school year. And then reevaluate it.
Right.
Probably after the end of the first semester, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, make sure that we have a safe environment.
Hopefully, you know, it doesn't happen. The other thing is, and this would be probably a question for Mr. Vassalotti, who just isn't here, maybe you probably know this, the, you know, every two years, they reclassify the sports teams, you know, division one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And I know for whatever reason, Hovin got, even though their enrollment went down and they got moved up to division two for competitive reasons, but the, when those came out, those two schools, the listings came out, we had not combined them yet. And they were listed in their divisions on their population on their own scores. Now, if they, if we contacted Columbus and made them aware that, hey, listen, we're not going to have 500 at this school and 500 at this school, or whatever it is, we got 1,000, and it puts us in a new, because, you know, they're playing to those guidelines, and then they forfeit the games and everything else.
Right. I'll check with Mr. Vassalotti. I know they've been in contact with the Ohio High School Athletic Association, because there were issues about eligibility with the merger, and they got all that straightened out. I will talk to him and get back with Mr. Bravo to share that response.
Okay, thank you.
There's been a lot of conversation about athletics. And I know recently in the paper, Ms. Teck was interviewed about athletics and education, and the importance of stressing it's education first, as we know, but we also want well-rounded students. And hopefully, with our college and career communities, as well as these other mergers, that we're going to get more students who will have more opportunity to participate in these athletic offerings. And so hopefully, there will be a greater pool from which to choose, and therefore giving students opportunity to participate.
Absolutely.
Because many times, students won't participate knowing that I'm not even going to get on the field anyway. Because, you know, you get these quality of students, or the sense that, or perception that, there's a certain quality of students I want to fit in. Where now we have opportunities where our students will say, hey, I have a chance.
And some of these kids would be pleasantly surprised at what they could do.
Absolutely.
If they were to just take the opportunity to go out and try, and like I said, they got a heck of a coaching staff over there, they're really trying hard to pull it together. They're aware of the situation. I've talked to them about it at great length, and they're recruiting, and like you said, hey, if you just go out and take a shot at it, if you never take a shot at it, you'll never know.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I have one more real quick thing. Oh, thank you, sir. So this is more directed to the board. Just so you're aware, sorry, Mr. Superintendent, behind the camera a little. Lisa King, who is the head of the Metro Parks, is helping lead a charge with Leadership Background Class 33, because Kent Boyd is a member of our class. We're going to be working, we worked in conjunction with Business Affairs to get some work done on the field in order to get ready for the home opener for the merge teams. So if board members would like to mark their calendars, Saturday, August 5th and Saturday, August 12th, we're going to have volunteers out working, doing some painting, doing some power washing, helping spruce up the field to get ready for the first scrimmage will be, I believe it'll be on those, actually, those very days. So it'll be from 8:00 to 2:00. So if you want to come out and get your hands dirty, I know Crew 32 has been invited or will be invited to join us. So if you haven't gotten it yet, you should join. The field at the Kenmore Stadium, so painting bleachers and things like that. So definitely not a suit and tie kind of thing, but bring some gloves and...
Pull the time again?
Eight to two.
Eight to two.
I know there's also...
I was just going to ask if Brian might...
And I know there's also going to be some efforts around their first away game as
well, so please pay attention to your email for when that comes up. Something to send the kids off on their first away game as well. And I will say, you know, I want to say a couple of things about, around this as well, and just speaking, since we're on athletics too now, about the teams. Coach Boyd sent me some photos recently and some remarks, and I was asking him some questions back and forth. And he and I have had some dialogues around this, but, I mean, those kids are excited. And they're out in the community, and they're already doing service projects together. They are, you know, cheering each other on already. And I think that, you know, this community really needs to come and wrap its arms around both of these areas of the city and show them some love and support, because these kids are really excited, and they're doing good things, and they are cheering each other on again. And I think it would be a great disservice to them to not be all in. The decision has been made, and we're moving forward. And now we have to figure out how to do it in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration and love, because these kids deserve that. It's their school. It's not ours. It's not, you know, with all due respect to anyone that went to those schools, it's not theirs either. It is the communities, and it's the children's, and they deserve every opportunity to have the same experience that the folks that graduated from either of those schools independently had when they went to school. And so we do need to show them some love and support. So I want to thank, of course, Project Ujima and all of the work that they've done and the discussions that they have, that they are having now, and that they continue to have with the folks in these communities. Both communities deserve a lot of respect and love and support, you know, the adults as well. But I don't want to see the conversation spill over to where what we hear is that the kids are having concerns about the way the adults are reacting. I think that's a huge disservice to these students. So I'd really love to see us come around these students. I want to thank the superintendent for bringing Project Ujima in, for continuing the dialogue, for bringing Crystal here today to talk to us about all of that. And I'd like to ask a question. I mean, I guess based on, and, well, to the point real quick too about the security concerns, I agree with Mr. Otterman, and I hope it never happens. I would like to see that we are prepared, but I hope that we also give our students some credit and some faith that they will do the right thing, that they'll be able, maybe through these discussion circles, to be able to find their voice and express their concerns in healthy ways, but that we do give them some credit and that hopefully, as Mr. Otterman said, we'll never need any of those extra precautions, but that they will be there in the event, you know, that there are some disagreements. Crystal, what, so from the discussions that you've had so far, the community at large, what can the community do to support whatever, the work that you're doing, the conversations you're having?
Well, and that was the question. We got through maybe about five people in that particular question. And what was interesting, that most of the responses, you know, what can you do individually, what can we do collectively, had to do with just what you talked about, is how do we build relationships? How do we come together? You know, some of us are still concerned and upset about the decision, but the decision has been made, so what can we do? So I try to push them to be more specific, you know, so what do you think specifically should be done? Someone offered that they think that, you know, the teachers need to smile and make the school environment very welcoming, and a lot of the Kenmore students are understandably concerned. They think none of their teachers are going to be there, and so they're concerned about that. And so just to make the school environment welcoming, so there were some staff that were there that said that that's the role that they could play. But more than anything, we're going to try to figure out and get them to come up with maybe a couple of action ideas as to what they can do, what specifically can be done to bring the communities together so that they can collectively support the students. So we haven't gotten that far in the conversation. We hope to finish that up and really delve into that in the circle two, but that's a great question. That's what we're going to get people to try to really, really drill down on and answer that question.
Thank you.
I was curious, maybe this is a question for David or whoever can answer it. The resource officers from the two buildings last year, will they be the same this year? And have they participated in the circles with the students and/or the adults?
For the student circles, no, I had no adults in the room with the students, other than the facilitators from Project Ujima. That's something I'll have to work through Student Services on, if any of those officers have moved assignments in terms of who's going to be back there.
I'm just curious. I think, you know, in my mind, it'd be a good relationship for those students to build right now before they get in there. So if they, they're not the critical mass, but, you know, maybe if they have the relationship with those officers before the first day of school, maybe, you know, if nothing else, hey, there's a problem here, they have a little comfort level with those adults.
It'd be great if you'd come to the next circle.
Mr. Otterman and Mr. Alexander.
I know I asked a million too many questions, but once the school's built, Garfield or Kinfield, or whatever it's going to be, physical location where Garfield is now, there's a new school, are they going to be playing their home football games at Kenmore State?
No, the plan right now is if we can fit the, you know, where we already have a field next to Garfield, or we may look at another location that's nearby. Remember, we have Kent Middle School that is vacant, and as you know from our athletic committee, you know, there are some needs for new athletic facilities. So those are some conversations that we'll be having during our program of requirements meetings that start this fall.
My question was going back to Tim. If we have those SROs who are already there at those schools, who know those kids, it would be a good idea to have them transferred over to that, as well as our safety team members, because they have the relationship already with the kids. Now they can help hopefully blend the kids together by them being on the same team and on the same level, and being able to bring those students on the same level too. So what you said, Tim, was I really agree with you, but if we already have them, then they already have a relationship, it might be best just to send them on over there, because they have a relationship with the kids and each other.
I know we have the circles, and that's excellent, and we have a core group or a foundation. Hopefully, students will have enough strength, courage to speak for themselves, particularly if there are issues that arise, that they would be ahead of it and be that voice of reason to stir us and their individual students in the right direction. But had we thought about having individual orientations for all the freshmen, all the sophomores, all the juniors, all the seniors, to just have a day or night inviting all of them to come in? This is the time we want to meet each other and have someone from the circles to speak. We've been through this process. This is how we want to encourage to be Garfield-Kenmore. That's who we are now. And they've been through these experiences to somehow then, that cuts the ease, that cuts some of that, you know, negative things out, and people can get to see each other, even if it's just for a couple of hours before the actual school starts.
We are staggering our starts by rate. I don't know if Mark Black or Dr. Williams Woods wants to add anything to that.
Let me just, let's back up a little bit. Starting April and May, the first thing we did was have both of our student councils come together at the school, make a plan of what their start of their school day is going to look like, the start of their week. Second thing we did was we had all of the freshmen go over and spend two days with the other freshmen. They're going to be our current 10th graders. We had our current 10th graders go over and spend time together, and then we had our juniors, who's going to be our seniors, spend time together in the building, okay? And then we had our 8th graders go up to the building with the Kent 8th graders, and they spent time at the building together, processing what their class is going to be able to do and add to the merger. And we also have our students working right now in our High School Success Program, our Kenmore students and our Garfield students, with the C tag coordinators, working on their plans for their school year. And yes, we have the staggered starts. Freshmen will spend two days together, then the sophomores and juniors will spend days together, and then after Labor Day, our seniors will come. Same thing that is, 6th graders will spend time together, and then the 7th grader will come, and the 8th graders will come, so that we have a transition.
Great questions. Anything else? Did you have anything?
I just wanted to also thank Board Member Walsh for attending the circle, your presence and your input and your support. It's a lot, so thank you.
Well, thank you all for keeping the focus where it should be, which is on the kids and the ones that are going to have this high school experience and middle school experience. We appreciate it. So thanks for all of your hard work.
Anything else on this topic? Any more for your report?
No.
I'm not going to follow that.
Are you going to follow?
Okay. So no presidents, no representatives?
No, I already gave mine.
Did you really have any?
I don't.
Committee reports. Legal contracts and board policy.
None.
Finance and capital management.
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement.
We do. We're always busy. So we have a few updates tonight. First of all, on the graded course of study for language arts and math. Tonight, if you recall, we approved a revised graded course of study in two main areas. Those were English and math. The Ohio Learning Standards for English and Math were adopted in 2010, and the standards went through a revision process over the past year and were passed by the State Board of Ed in February. Parents, students, and our own Akron educators participated in the state process of reviewing and revising their original standards. Our faculty reviewed these revisions and incorporated them into Akron's graded course of study for English and math. One of the math examples that I can give you is for money. Elementary school teachers believe that schools should teach money concepts early and for several grades, not just, you know, here's a penny, here's a dime, et cetera. Based on teachers' feedback, the revised standards now specify a learning progression for money concepts from kindergarten through fourth grade. Our learning specialists in teaching and learning department have already started introducing these new standards through professional development last spring and will continue throughout the next school year. We'll also start to share these changes with students and parents. Let's see. Number, the second thing is a timeline for revised standards in science and social studies, those are, and financial literacy. Those are being worked through at the Ohio Department of Education and will be completed this fall, so expect the same kind of process coming forward for those.
And just to follow up, and I mentioned a little bit earlier, but on the design team meetings for college and career academies, and we have great progress being made at each of the design team meetings to recommend career pathways for their individual schools. At this point, we've completed East, Elliot, and STEM. We're halfway through Firestone. That meets tomorrow at 1:30, I believe, if you're interested. And I'll just give you a quick update on who else is still. Book those meeting on August 1st, and Kenmore-Garfield Friday, August 4th, and Monday, August 7th. And NIF, Akron Early College. August 4th, and Monday, August 7th. NIFSTEM, Akron Early College, also on August 4th, and the Alternative Academy on August 4th and Monday, August 7th. But if you can't make, and most of those are all daytime meetings, if you can't make that, reminder is that on Thursday, August 10th, at the Bookdol CLC, there will be an all-community informational meeting for everyone. So if you are unable to attend, there will be, I think, a little bit of everybody together, but then you will be able to break out into your own individual school so that you see what your own community is involved with. So please remember to come up, come to that. And final recommendations will be provided to the superintendent September, and hopefully presented in October. So we're really moving along at great speed, but not too fast. I mean, I think we're making good decisions, so it's not something, we're not rushing it. It's moving. We've educated people enough that they're rolling right with the process, so. And then the design team meeting for the I Promise School. The teams are continuing to meet and making lots of progress as well. There'll be a combined meeting on July 31st from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Farallon Hilton. And all board members are invited to hear and see what they, and I hear they're being very creative in their presentations. As anything with the liberal, we found happens. They become very creative in their events, so.
I was gonna say, where are Rachel and then the same thing?
Quick question. The Thursday, August 10th at Bookdol, is that a definite go? Because the list I got here says optional meeting for final recommendations if needed.
That's a definite yes.
It's a definite yes, okay.
Yeah, we firm that up for all, just to make sure. And the process will be that everyone comes together, but then each high school's gonna be in a separate room, so that they can uniquely look at each high school's design.
Okay, well, thank you.
What time is that, Bookdol?
Six to eight P.M. Any other questions, or anything else from instructional policies, student achievement? Thank you. With that, we do have a need for executive session tonight. So pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1, to just, for the purpose of considering employment of a public employee or official of the district, for the purpose of considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student of the school district, and pursuant to Section 121.22G2, for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for school district public purposes, I am requesting a motion for executive session.
Second.
For the motion and the second for executive session. Any questions, or any other call for you? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancefield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Miss Walker?
Yes.